That sounds so polite, doesn't it? All right. Sorry, everybody, my computer's decided to update Zoom, so I will go ahead and start the meeting. Good evening and welcome tonight to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the, I would guess, regular business meeting for August 8th, 2023. The time right now is 7:01 PM. I'm going to go ahead and ask that Clerk Wykoff, please call the roll. Go ahead. All right. Thank you, and I'm just going to pause for a moment. Did that so we didn't get an echo here internally. Then I have Councilmember Fisher to please lead us in the pledge.
States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item that we have on our agenda this evening is under announcements and presentations. This is proclamation for Purple Heart Day. And I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record. We do have members of the VFW here, and I will present this to you momentarily. So recognizing August 7th, 2023 as Purple Heart Day, whereas on August 7th, 1782, George Washington established the Badge of Military Merit, which was the first medal authorized for enlisted soldiers in the Continental Army to recognize a singularly meritorious action by a soldier. And whereas on February 22nd, 1932, US Army Chief of Staff Douglas MacArthur established the Purple Heart Award in the spirit of the Badge of Military Merit in honor of George Washington's bicentennial birthday and authorize the award for soldiers in the United States Army for soldiers who are wounded or lose their lives in military action. And August 7th is annually recognized as Purple Heart Day. And whereas in 1942, President Franklin D. Roosevelt expanded the Purple Heart Award to other branches of the United States Military by authorizing the Navy Department to award the Purple Heart to personnel wounded or killed in action, beginning with the attack on Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941. And today, the Purple Heart is authorized for people serving in all branches of the United States Military who are wounded or lose their lives in military actions. And whereas following the attack at Pearl Harbor until the day she passed, Eleanor Roosevelt carried in her wallet a piece of paper with the following written upon it. Dear Lord, lest I continue in my complacent ways, help me to remember that someone, somewhere died for me today. And if there be war, help me to remember to ask, am I worth dying for? And in our daily walk, we should always remember those serving and their families and honor their service and their sacrifice in our words, our hearts, and our actions. And whereas the word Roney Jr., Veterans Foreign Wars Post 7/5/11, which represents and advocates for veterans in the community of Monroe, requested the city of Monroe declare itself the Purple Heart City. And on December 7th, 2021, Monroe Mayor and City Council jointly issued a proclamation declaring the city of Monroe as a Purple Heart City. And since 2014, August 7th has been a day to honor and remember people wounded and who have lost their lives in action and in service to our country. And whereas flying the Purple Heart flag on the city of Monroe's municipal campus symbolizes remembering and honoring Purple Heart Award recipients. Now therefore, I Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the City of Monroe, Washington, do hereby recognize and proclaim August 7th, 2023 as Purple Heart Day and authorize and direct the flying of the Purple Heart flag at the city of Monroe's municipal campus from the morning of August 4th, 2023 to the afternoon of August 11th, 2023, and encourage residents, employers, and visitors to commit to remembering and honoring recipients of the Purple Heart Award in our words, our hearts, and our actions. So I'd like to invite the VFW to come forward. If you have any, any words that you'd like to offer us today? Thank you. And I'm going to invite you and your colleagues to come forward. I'd like to present this to you, and I'd love to include family in a photo, if that's okay with you. Councilmembers, will you join me? Will you join us? All right, thank you very much, everybody. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be an executive session. Let me pull back up the agenda. Oh, we have one more presentation. Just a second, find the agenda. All right. The next item on the agenda is also under announcements and presentations. It's item 4.2, City Branding Update with our Finance Director. Councilor Becky. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, as you know, weeks ago, we were in front of you giving you an update on where we're at with the city branding. We have sent a letter with the branding ambassadors and now have some three Ps that have been vetted through both the senior leadership team and with the mayor. And tonight we'll have Jen Willie from J-Ray along with her team who will give you an update on what those are and where we're at on the next steps. With that, I will turn to the panel.
Hi, thank you. It's nice to see all of you. And as Becky said, my name is Jen Willie. I'm with J-Ray, and we've had the pleasure of working with your community and your city officials on going through this branding process, which has just been a great way to learn even more about the city of Monroe and the people within your community. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So this probably looks quite familiar to all of you, but just wanted to, this has been really our North Star. As we've gone through this process, we know that so much work and time and community effort was poured into this vision statement. And so we've kept it very close to our work and helping guide us as we've gone through the branding process. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. Thank you. And just a refresher on how we, we've gotten to where we are today. I know that my colleagues met with you back in June, and this slide also may look a little bit familiar. And we'll keep adding to this until we're complete with the process. But as we've gone through, we've, we've done surveys, we've done phone calls and interviews. And most recently, we had a wonderful workshop with nine of your brand ambassadors that represented the community in various ways. And it was just a great opportunity to test some things on, on them that we've learned and uncovered through the survey and research process. And to the next slide. So this is, you're probably wondering, what are the three Ps? And so we'll be getting to that here in a little bit. But this is just a visual to kind of talk a little bit about the structure of branding and the three Ps, which consist of your personality, your promise, and your position, will are really this internal facing document. So this may not be something that, what I, what I share with you later in this presentation may not be something that you see on signs around Monroe or in ads, if you replace ads encouraging people to move or visit Monroe. But it's what will help guide us through the rest of this process. So as we go down the path of creating visuals or developing your brand voice and, and how you talk as a, as a, as a city, this, this will be that guiding document. And so what you, you know, it will help guide what you say, how you say it, how you show it. For most brands, many people won't actually ever see their three Ps, but they'll experience them through the messaging that's developed or through the visuals that are created and the stories that are shared. So once you've determined your brand personality, you ensure that it authentically comes through in the tone and style of your visual design message and interactions and communications. So the brand pillars are the things that, that are, you know, we know and that are true about Monroe. So your vision, your values, your objectives and goals, the makeup of your community, and the things that you're working on as a city or community. And so the brand platform is what we're looking at. We're, we're trying to help develop that personality, promise, and position, and then create the message and visuals that will then be pushed out through your brand tactics that you see there in the red at the bottom. All right, so we can go to the next one. And so throughout our, our research and communication or interviews with people throughout the city, these six words, these personalities are what really bubbled up and what we heard over and over. And so if you were to, if you were to describe the city of Monroe as a person, if the city of Monroe was your neighbor, this is how that person might be described. And so these are the six personality traits that we found really rang loud and clear about Monroe. And keep in mind too, that your brand can be aspirational. So you'll sometimes throughout the three Ps, you might hear something that you're like, well, I know that, I know that the city of Monroe is working on that, but I don't know that we're there, but that's okay. This can be what you're aspiring to be as well. It should be attainable and reachable, but it can absolutely be something that you're aspiring for. So your brand personality is just really that human, humanistic characteristics behind the city of Monroe. And so these six words, friendly, supportive, natural, inviting, playful, and vibrant are what bubbled up. And we have descriptors underneath that help really kind of refine that in case you're wondering what, what that word might mean to us. Because I know words can mean a little bit, bring a little bit different feelings to everybody. So then let's go ahead and go to the next one. So your brand position is really how, how you're perceived. How does Monroe stand out from other cities and communities that you're surrounded by? Or how do you stand out from Seattle and Bellevue and the bigger, larger cities that make up this area? So this is the second of our three Ps, and this is your position. So what this is what we developed through working with your senior leadership team and with the mayor, where proximity and community converge. Naturally, you feel at home in Monroe. We come together to experience events, welcome one another, celebrate community, and plan for our future. All right, and then we can move on to the final three Ps, and that is our brand promise. And so that's Monroe's North Stars. It's, it's what really truly directs your brand, and it's what will always be true about Monroe. So this is what was developed, is vibrant living, meaningful experiences. You will never feel more welcome than when you're in Monroe. From friendly neighbors to vibrant experiences and diverse opportunities, you will always feel you belong. Okay, and so here you can see the city of Monroe's three Ps altogether, the personality, the position, and the promise. And then I can, just wanted to give you a little roadmap of where we are in the process, and we're really just about halfway through with the presentation tonight. We will officially be done with Phase Two of the project. And now we begin the, what I think is the really exciting part, where we start developing your visual identity. We help create a place brand architecture, and we start creating the logos and coming up with the color palettes and the mood boards and everything that will help inspire the next steps. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now. Otherwise, that's all I have to share today.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? I don't see any. I really appreciate the presentation and, and we have an orange flag up.
Yes, thank you. Is there a way that we can get a copy of that great presentation available to us so I can peruse it a little bit more, just to catch up with where we're at? Thank you.
So Jen, we'll make certain that a copy of that gets sent. What you didn't see was that Councilmember Foulter was trying to take a picture of one of the slides. I almost stopped you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion from council? All right, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate the job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead and go back to the agenda, just a second. Everybody, I was gonna say every folks, isn't that great? All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except in a quasi judicial matter that is subject to the public hearing. Three minutes are afforded each speaker. And I turn to Clerk Wykoff, anybody who signed in to speak this evening? Sir, sir, one moment, please. Okay. Thank you. So if you'd like to speak tonight, you don't need to sign in. If you are interested in speaking, you can go ahead and put your hand up. I'll go ahead and acknowledge the people who are in the room first, and then I do see that somebody has their hand up in the attendees list. I do ask that our clerk, go ahead and put the three minute timer up. And I invite you to come forward. Just a second. Just a second. No, just, just a second. We're getting the, okay. So please go ahead and state your name and area of residence for the record, and then we'll start the time. Sir, I need to ask you to stop for just a second. And we'll pause it, yeah, we'll pause the timers. Councilmember Gamble, I see you've got your hand up.
Yeah, we can't hear comments from, coming from the, yeah, I can't hear anything. We haven't been able to hear the city clerk or anybody that's not talking at the dais.
Just a second, sir.
I concur.
Just a second. Jody can try that again. Could you hear her? Okay, and you can hear me just fine, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to switch microphones.
Test, test.
Can you hear Jody?
Yes.
Just a second, sir. Okay, you can go ahead and restart the timer since we had a technical issue. And just a second. Okay, and can you just state your name again for the record? And also so that I can verify that Councilmember Gamble and Kenny can hear you?
Yeah, my name is Carl Dennis.
Okay, just a second, Carl. Okay, I've got a thumbs up, go for it.
Okay, I live at 638 South Lewis Street here in Monroe, right next to the boat ramp. What my plan is, is to take my property and split it. Take some pieces of it, build a dispensary for marijuana, and sell it. I've lived here for 32 years. The house built in 1960. I have a perfect place. I live in the hub of Monroe. Everybody comes here, all the rafters, everybody. It's a very lucrative business, and Monroe could benefit, and I could benefit. It could be policed, security. There's plenty of parking. Everything is there. There's a, it's just a great opportunity for the city to make money. Maybe people will be nicer down there at the boat ramp, but it's very bad. It's not, there's no jurisdiction at the boat ramp. Fish and wildlife does not come down there ever. I have had them down there to take pictures. At my beck and call, I've called the Parks Department, I've called the city of Monroe, I've called the police department, to nothing. Nothing really happens. I own more of property than I thought goes into the park by like 10 feet, according to the boundary lines. I like it surveyed so I can split it off. I split off a piece, I've already got a, I've already got a building ready to go. It's a building on my property, split about a quarter of it, maybe a third, maybe one eighth. Doesn't matter, just a little bit. And like I said, plenty of parking, plenty of access. It could be, it can be security. The police could get involved, people will come down there and kill each other. And there are so many people in Monroe, it's ridiculous. There's a lot of residents up here now. They're coming from Bellevue, they're coming from Redmond. I talked to all of these people. I see the homeless, I see everything. I look at it every day, right next to that boat ramp. I would like it to stop, and I'd like it to be peaceful, and I'd like to make money. Especially because I'm old, I need money, I need money. City of Monroe does not have a dispensary here. There's one cushery up there on the edge of the city. I've been told you can't have it here. I want to change my zoning. The zoning is seven dwellings on one piece of property. I tried to split it before, the city wanted a lot of money to split it. I don't have that kind of money. I needed money. I have business partners that are ready to go. That's about all I got to say. Thank you very much. Please think about it, and let me have the next process. Please tell me, is there any questions?
Thank you very much for your comments this evening.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, I do have one person who is signed up to, who has their hand up in the attendees list, Peggy Nielsen. So we'll go ahead and bring Peggy Nielsen forward, and just one moment. And I see that Councilmember Hanford has his, Councilmember Hanford is right across from me. Do you have your hand up, Kevin? Okay. Okay, I will bring you into the panel. Okay, Peggy, just a second. We're going to wait for, for Kevin to get connected in, and he's muted, and all is good. So we're gonna, can we get an echo? After three years, we got it, right? Okay. Peggy, please go ahead and state your name and association with the city of Monroe, and then we'll split the timer.
Okay, great, my name is Peggy Nielsen, and I'm here on behalf of the Monroe Library.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I just wanted to come by and give you all a little bit of information on how our summer reading program is going and how we are engaging with youth and families here in Monroe this summer. Our summer reading program has been going on since June 1st, and so far, we have already had 180 children finish their summer reading, which means they have been engaged with literacy and with reading throughout the summer. We still have a month left to go for others to finish up. We've also had a host of very exciting programs for children and families and intergenerational audiences to attend at the library, and that includes storytimes and construction zone, where kids can come and play with a variety of building and construction toys. We've had pet portrait painting sessions, as well as gardening programs and theater programs. And we also had a fire truck storytime with over 200 attendees who got to hear stories and learn about fire safety from our local fire department. And so that's just some of the fun things that we've been doing this summer at the library, and we are looking forward to even more in the fall. So I will just say, thank you for having me today, and I hope you'll all come by the library the next time you're able to and see what we have going on.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great evening. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? If so, if you're online, hit star nine or hit the raise hand button in Zoom. If you're here in the audience, just raise your hand. You've already had an opportunity to speak, thank you. I'm sorry, I should have clarified, sir, this is an opportunity for you to speak to the council. We don't go back and forth to the council. Yes, you're welcome. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? All right, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be, one moment. Executive session. So we do have a need for an executive session for an initial five minutes. We will be going into executive session for potential litigation person RCW 423110 subsection little I and property acquisition person to RCW 42.30.110 subsection little B. We'll be in again for an initial five minutes, beginning at 7:27 PM. If there's a need to extend, we will announce that through both in this physical room and also on the Zoom meeting. There will be action following the executive session, so I encourage folks who are interested in any item on the agenda to continue to stay in the room or stay logged on. So again, we're in executive session beginning now at 7:28, and we'll announce extensions. Thank you.
The executive session has been extended five minutes.
All right, we're now back out of executive session. The time right now is 7:38 PM. And we are going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be the consent agenda. I turn to orange flag from the council, or hand up. Orange flag from the council, Councilmember Hanford, he's got his flag up first, go for it.
Move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Have a motion from Councilmember Hanford to approve the consent agenda, a second from Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussion on the motion? I saw the orange flag move, Kevin. Saying done, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Let the record show that Councilmember Kenny was not in for the vote. She was actually in the attendees, and we are pulling her forward right now. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Councilmember Kenny, I'm sorry, I didn't notice you're in the attendees list. The vote was 6-0 in favor of the consent agenda. We're moving on to the next item. That one is 8.1, New Business Resolution Number 2023009, converting railroad avenue to an eastbound one-way street. And I turn to staff. We're going to get more steps in here. Good evening. No, yeah. No. It gives you that radio voice, right?
Good evening, Mayor.
There you go.
Good evening, Council. I apologize in advance for bumbling around up here. It's my first time at this.
I apologize in advance for bumbling around up here. It's my first time at this location, so let's see here. Jody, if you could load the slide deck. No, here we go. So this agenda bill is bringing forward tonight, proposing a resolution to convert a large portion of railroad avenue into a one-way street designation. Currently in the upper hand, upper left hand of the screen, the white arrows show the traffic movement allowed in that neighborhood. The proposed resolution would convert a portion of railroad avenue just east of Charles Street all the way to its east end where it intersects with Simons Road. It would convert that to a one-way direction eastbound as shown in the lower left image on the screen. All the other side streets and whatnot will still continue to operate as they do today. See, staff would, engineering staff and the public works crews would work together to implement the traffic plan to promote our standards that we follow. And go out there and effectuate that one-way road to a permanent sort of channelization plan. So the history, so I mean, that's what's proposed. Excuse me. That's what's proposed. A little bit of background on railroad avenue. It has historically operated as a two-way road for, for quite a while until about a year and a half ago. The business owner, Town and Country Tractor, which on the images, that large red building, they they put up some barricades or some obstacles, some channelization devices like cones and, and barricades on, on half of the roadway, essentially blocking the westbound travel lane. Yeah, when we caught wind of this, we went out there and talked to them about it. We did some investigation. The property owner, his property actually is located, his property line is under about the middle of railroad avenue pavement. So, and he has felt that traffic patterns have changed or traffic volume has changed or behavior has changed to the point where he feels his business operations aren't being able to be conducted in a safe manner. So he decided to put up some delineators along his property line, which is down the middle of the road to create, if you will, a buffer between his storefront and the moving traffic. Wasn't quite up to par to what the city would hope. After talking to with, with him and whatnot, we came up with more effective traffic control plan. Still considered a temporary traffic control plan, but at least it helped increase the safety or minimize the confusion of people trying to drive those roads while we figure this out. As I mentioned, that was about a year and a half ago. What we've done since then, we have, of course, continued to talk to the property owner. We also hired a traffic consultant to model the neighborhood. To model the neighborhood to say, hey, if we were to do this, what would the impact be to the neighborhood, not just the current situation, but also if that area was to be built out to its, say, full potential in her, as identified in her comp plan. So you see in the upper left corner, the, the whole area that, in that area is considered downtown commercial zoning. So we asked him to model that scenario as well. If railroad avenue were to maintain its temporary one-way status and become more permanent. His results were that currently there's about six hundred and seventy average daily trips, traffic cars going by the, or down that road. We had a full build-out scenario. They estimated that the traffic would jump up to about twelve hundred and thirty trips, twelve hundred and thirty-four trips each day. While that does look like it doubles it in terms of the quantity of numbers, it's still considered a low-volume road. It's not, it's not significant compared to something like Kelsey, that might have fifteen thousand cars a day. So so, by the comment of what's the impact to this one-way designation? The traffic consultant premise that it's not a significant impact, should it still be a one-way road in the far future? So with that, we moved on to the next, the next thing, and that was to canvas the adjacent neighborhood and see what they felt about this idea. The survey, of course, the results are in your packet. And the general summation, if I will, is, you know, it's a change. Not too many people were excited about the idea. The general negative impression on it. We had about five basic questions and about, we sent it out to forty-two different properties that we felt were gonna have the biggest impact in the area. And about half of them were residential and about the other half were business owners. So it's just kinda like a split there. You know, three, three, you know, what were your opinion about this or this one-way conversion? Three were positive, five were negative, and for some reason, eight skipped the question. So we had about seventeen of the forty-two properties, about seventeen or forty percent of the people partook in the survey. They're concerned about the safety of it, which was kinda interesting. It could be that the way it's in the temporary condition right now with the implementation we got out there is more of a temporary road closure, hurling closure situation. We believe the situation will definitely improve its safety if we can get in there, do adequate roadway signage, channelization, pavement markings to our national standards and get that in, in a more permanent and more expected road, the channelization plan. You know, there, the comment also was, would this significantly impact your, your experience in the neighborhood? There's definitely a lot felt that there was gonna be a negative impact. While this might be inconsistent with the traffic study results, you know, I did a quick look at it and it really seemed to add, you know, it's just kinda picking some points, maybe it seemed to be there might be a five to thirty-five second additional travel time if you're trying to get up to highway two and you had to reroute around railroad avenue. That, that to me was what I figured was the travel time mathematical impact, five to thirty-five seconds. And I also like to continue to point out that this kind of one-way designation has been in effect for a year already. So people have, I assume, gotten used to it by now. You know, maybe they remember the way it used to be, but you know, they've had the time to adapt to this situation. So the, the proposal in this agenda bill is to pass a resolution that would effectuate a one-way operation of railroad avenue just east of Charles Street to its eastern terminus with Simons Road. Staff would design and install the necessary traffic control to create a safe one-way operation going forward. And that will be the situation, kind of putting a cap on what's been going on over there for about a year or so. Just kinda looking forward to trying to resolve this temporary traffic control situation, make it permanent safer. The thank you. This is the last slide. Great. All the other neighborhoods will still have their two-way operation as, as shown. Chances are that people to the south of the area will probably redirect or to either just take Fremont over to Lewis Street and go north, or they probably go over to Wood Street and go north just to get to highway two and Main Street to highway two. Again, that was that five to thirty-five second kind of additional travel time that I estimated. So that's it. If you have any questions about the proposed resolution or anything about this, I'm here to answer questions.
All right, thank you very much. If you would like to, did, did you wanna put the, the proposed motion up on the screen? Okay, there you go. And turning to council, the proposed motion, the requested action is up on the screen for your consideration. And if you've got any questions for staff, they're here. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this all makes sense and I appreciate you doing this presentation. Sounds like the safest way to go about it. And so I moved to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight, designating railroad avenue as a one-way street and authorizing the city engineer to design and install infrastructure and appurtenances so that railroad avenue functions as a one-way street, providing for eastbound travel from the intersection of Charles Street to the intersection of Simons Road.
I have a motion from councilmember Hanford, a second from councilmember Davis for the requested action in eight point one new business as shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, councilmember Scarborough. Red beans go. There you go.
I just, Jason? Should we have the word temporary one-way until we resolve the problem? In the resolution or in the proposal?
Staff, do you recommend making any revision to the requested action?
I, I, I wouldn't wanna suggest that it's gonna be a temporary. So I wouldn't want words temporary in there. We're trying to resolve a temporary situation right now.
Councilmember Scarborough, anything further? No. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda and that item would be, I think, councilmember reports. Councilmember reports, we'll go ahead and start with councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I attended the last concert in the park, music in the park, and that was a great time. Great to see our city parks filled with every type of people you could imagine and it was wonderful. Great community event.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
I attended the Somers County Council meeting tonight that was here in the school district building. And my family attended night out. I think that was a little while ago. I've been gone.
That was last week.
Okay, awesome. I was not there, but they were able to make it. So they had a great time and we're sending you pictures. So another really, really cool community event that we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Yes, I attended the night out as well and it was like a good time was had by all and great representation by our police department, our safety, fire and everybody else. It was a, a good showing of why we have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, I attended the night out as well. I, I love that tradition and very grateful that we, that we take a night off as a city council to truly honor, you know, that, that event. It just blows me away. It just seems to get bigger and bigger every year. Didn't think that was possible, but it, it is. You know, the numbers were just fantastic and really, can you, you look at our vision statement and a lot of the stuff we're doing on the branding, you know, there's an event. These events have been going on in the park truly kind of embody that. So it was, it was great. I wandered for an hour and a half or so and just, you know, interacted with all the booths and just watched, you know, kinda people watched. And it was just a, it's just a great event. And again, beautifully emceed and all the sponsors, it was just, it was fantastic. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
I also was at the night out and councilmember member, yeah, pretty much covered all the bases there. It was another large group of, or turnout, which is impressive. So many years now we've been doing this and it's not waning, it's growing. So I think it looked like everybody was having a good time. I, I went there with a crew of my son's friends and all like that. They've been there. That was their first time there. So it was kinda neat. So, yeah, it looked like everybody else was having a good time too. So good job.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter. I'm gonna call you councilmember Heather.
Guess where I was last Tuesday? That's right, with all of you. At the National Night Out, that was great. I, I agree with Jason. It is one of our best things that we do as a community, that we all come together and kinda just get to see the wonderful resources that our city has in both people and in institutions. And, and then I left from there to go to Alaska. Now, this is just a personal report, but I was really impressed with their recycling and everything. It was a, it was a, it was a challenge to me that I, I know this is not a government thing, but I think that, you know, it was an example of what we all could do if we all spent a little bit more time making less of a footprint on this earth. And of course, it's all enforced by the bears there. But anyway, great time. I did visit their Borough Hall just so I could say it was a diplomatic visit. So thank you.
Nice. Councilmember Kenny.
Well, I'm the sweeper, as we say in cross-country races, where I come in behind everybody and, and sort of give the end report. But I also went to National Night Out and had a great time. Rain arrived with councilmember Foulter and somehow didn't really see the other council members there, but I know you were all around doing all your, your good glad handing. And I've also been able to go to all of the concerts this summer, and that's typically not what I'm able to do, but went to all four. And I've gotta say, I tried to bring a lot of out-of-town friends to enjoy the music and it's pretty cool when you can't find parking, not just at Lake Tye, but blocks away from Lake Tye. There are cars just nose to nose because we've got it going on in Monroe. And it has just been, I've been so proud of the city. I've been so proud of our Parks Department and, you know, everyone that puts these, these events on. It has just been a fantastic summer and the energy of all the people down there, kids, families, you know, elderly people, they're part of our community. Everyone is coming out. And it just makes me so proud. Just love going to these events and they are growing as other council members have said. It seems like it's just, we are just the happening place and that's part of our goals and our vision. And it's wonderful to see it become a reality. So great summer so far and more to come. Thank you.
Councilmember, councilmember Hanford, you had your flag up?
Yeah, thanks. I, an apology to the chief. I forgot to mention the mouse at the night out too. And I didn't see any of you, but I did see the chief, so.
Thank you. I think I saw five of you. Yeah. Okay, all right. Yeah. Gonna go to administrator night. Oh, staff reports. I am very sorry. Director Farrell, good evening. I see you just about every morning walking, walking your dog. Your dog's name? Moxie, okay, right. Oh, yeah, the helicopter did, yeah. Did everybody see the helicopter?
All right, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. So my, the report for Parks Department is in your packet. I just will point out one thing is that there is in there an update on the pickleball project. And we also have posted that same update on our webpage on the Parks Capital Projects page. And that's all. I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Anything about the pickle court? Go for it.
Um, I saw in here it said Lake Tye. There are ones going in, correct?
How many are going in there? Two pickleball only courts, two dedicated pickleball courts.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're supposed to say sweet and I know you're gonna relish it. And you're gonna relish it.
Sweet.
The pickle court.
Yeah, and I'm gonna relish it.
Yeah, all right. I'll move on. Okay. Thank you. Oh, thank you. I was trying to figure out how to, how to fit Bill in there. That was good. All right. Administrator Nate.
How do you top that? All right, so for the extended agenda, we are looking at a finance committee meeting next Tuesday, the fifteenth. I got confused for a minute because it said approval of minutes from three twenty-one, so that threw me off. We have a couple of items on the finance committee meeting. We have travel policy and expense reimbursement review with Becky Hassert, our finance director, and mid-year performance review update with Ben Worthen, our human resources and IT manager, and an IT update from Ben as well. For the regular study session for the fifteenth, we don't have any items on that. So on the next slide, when I do the city administrator reports, there'll be an opportunity to make a motion to cancel that meeting. Moving on though to the meetings on the following Tuesday, on August twenty-second, we will have a P three committee meeting to review the proposed six-year capital facilities plan update with both Jacob Roberts and Ben Swanson. And then for the regular council meeting, we do have a couple of And then for the regular council meeting, we do have a couple of consent agenda items on there right now for the approval of our accounts payable, payroll and meeting minutes. And then under new business, we have a resolution for an interfund loan, our LTAC appointments, salary commission appointments, and then our reports. So those are the things to look forward to on August twenty-second. For the city administrators report, as I mentioned, we are looking for a motion then to cancel the study session on August fifteenth.
Councilmember Kenny? Councilmember Kenny?
I moved to cancel the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Monroe City Council Study Session Meeting.
I have a motion from councilmember Kenny, a second from councilmember Hanford to cancel the August fifteenth study session. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pa, oh, anybody say no? All right. Motion passes, motion passed seven zero. Thank you.
And then staff was wondering whether or not the finance committee wanted to meet or whether or not you wanted to postpone discussion of the travel policies until September.
Well, I will be traveling in Spokane for work, so if I were to attend, it would be virtual. That makes a difference.
Anybody else on the committee? Go ahead, councilmember Scarborough.
Becky, is there anything that's, that is very necessary to have us meet that on that meeting?
Go for it. You can be loud.
Yeah, I got nothing I can hear.
Okay.
She wasn't loud enough.
Okay. Is there any objection to canceling the finance committee meeting on August fifteenth? Seeing no objection, it is canceled. All right.
All right. The other items that I have is I put on your, on the dais just the outline of the action plan that the Washington State Department of Transportation has for the US two bypass. I know that councilmembers have been interested in seeing what resolution WSDOT was going to propose, and here it is. I do want to thank our partners at WashDOT. I think that they are being very responsive to the city's needs. I've reached out to the Northwest Regional Director Brian Nielsen. I'm looking to set up a meeting with the mayor and the fire chief to talk further about what is happening at that right of way and how we might have kind of a more long-term solution. So more information on that to come in the, in the coming weeks. And then I want to just remind the city council that our finance department is moving over to the temporary city hall located kitty corner from this building, third story of the medical building. Court will be moving out of city hall at eight oh six Main Street next week, and that will completely empty out the building. So we'll be giving council an update, I understand from talking to Jacob Roberts, that we are looking to go out to bid, looks like at the end of August. So things are moving along on schedule at this point and we'll continue to keep you apprised. I want to give kudos to Ron Painter and Jamie Woolworth from our facility and the rest of the facilities team. If you've ever had to move out of your house, you can only imagine trying to move multiple people out of a building the size of city hall. They've just done a remarkable job at trying to be responsive to everybody's needs. And I just wanted to publicly recognize the work that they're doing for everybody else who has had to relocate out of that building. And then we're looking to schedule an open house in September. So once we get settled in, we'll have an opportunity, hopefully before council meeting, for you all to come over and, and take a look at the, at the new facility. That's all I've got for.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for administrator night? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Hi there. I was just wondering if, how long the building will be open? I need to go get my mail, which is curious, can we still just walk in and, and get mail out of our mailboxes?
Excellent question. You can get mail out of your mailboxes, but I'm sure we'll be moving the mail over to the, another facility at some point. It will let you know where you could find your mail at the next meeting.
Wonderful. Thanks so much.
Any other questions for administrator night? All right. Mayor's report, so you'll see Monroe this week in your packets there for both last week and the week before. Just a couple items to run through first, National Night Out, I was there as well. It was great seeing the turnout there. The Rotary is doing a great job. I understand that was their fourteenth year of, of putting that on and really appreciate the work they're doing. I also was at Music in the Park. I attended the last two. Really enjoyed the, the last one in particular. It was music that I certainly recognized from when I was growing up and that was, it was great. We did have a meeting earlier today, staff and I, with both Luke and Jim, who are our government affairs folks. We started talking a little bit about the legislative session for next year. So we will be coming to council at some point in time in the not-too-distant future to legislative committee to talk about a legislative agenda for twenty twenty-four. The other part of that is during the conversation, we also talked about having a community meeting about state route five two-two. So we are thinking about inviting two senators out to meet with the community, probably end of September, beginning of October. And so we'll, we'll keep you posted as we, as we are developing that. I'm also interviewing people for LTAC and the Salary Commission. And I anticipate bringing forward appointments for your consideration for confirmation on the twenty-second. So that's where that is. We did receive an email, I think it was yesterday, about one seventy-ninth, you'll see that in your email. I did follow up with staff about it. And staff has sent you an email that gives you some background information about where we are in one seventy-ninth. The short end of it is that we are working on reevaluating our policy. And I remember my discussion with Jacob from earlier today, that'll be coming forward to the, one of the public works committee, is that P four? P three? P three in the next month or so? Okay, all right. And just going through the, what he sent in response of the, the people who are interested in, in doing that, doing some traffic control out there, were given information about how to go about the process that's currently in policy, which includes getting signatures. And I understand, how many is it? About fifteen signatures that they would need to get?
Yes.
So so that, that's where that is. Staff, in the meantime, again, is evaluating the policies with a consultant. And, and in the meantime, the, the current policy would be that we just need to have signatures from neighboring property owners, as Jacob just mentioned. So I encourage you to take a look at your email. Does anybody have any questions at this point in time about that? And then as administrator and I pointed out, we've been working the issue related to the fires that have been occurring in the bypass. I am thankful for the work that the fire district has been doing and our police department and our human services folks around that. And I'm also thankful that DOT is, is doing some work in that. And if you have any questions about the draft schedule or the schedule that's before you, please feel free to, to reach out to me or to administrator night, and we can get responses back to you. It's my intent, actually, it's not my intent, I will be meeting the next couple of weeks with somebody from DOT and the fire district just to talk through coordination on that. And that's where that is. I have heard on social media, there are questions about what we're doing around unhoused residents. I just remind everybody here that this is not at all unique to Monroe. It's not at all unique to Pacific Northwest. It is something that you can see nationwide. I've seen it in Canada. This is a problem that exists and certainly in our state. One of the statements that I made to our legislative folks this evening was we keep dealing with the symptoms and the state needs to deal with the root causes of the problems that we have. So that's mental behavioral health, that's chemical dependency, that's housing, and a whole list of other things that we really need the state to step up and help us out with. So I have confidence that this jurisdiction is doing more than many other jurisdictions, and we're operating within federal law, state law, and the financial resources we have to, to, to manage these issues that we have in our community. So if anybody has any questions about that, feel free to reach out to me or to administrator night, and we'll be happy to talk with you. If you've got other ideas, you're always welcome to share them with us. We've tried many new things and a lot of those new, new things have stuck and, and are working. So if we didn't have those, those approaches, things probably would not be as good as they are today, they'd be worse. And we still have problems with where things are today. So does anybody have any questions about that while I'm, while you've got me on mic? All right. Oh, Department of Ecology. So we'll end on a happy note. We did receive, or I did receive earlier today, a letter from the Department of Ecology just acknowledging the, an outstanding wastewater treatment plant award for the city of Monroe wastewater treatment plant. When I started off as a council member, one of the first things I had to deal with was a clean water discharge issue related to violations out at the wastewater treatment plant. And we have not had any issues like that for a very long time. And in fact, we've been earning awards and we have plaques and the plaque will, the plaque for this year will be presented, I think, at our, at our staff barbecue on the thirty-first. But I just want to take this moment to just acknowledge the great work that our staff has been doing and to thank you, council, for prioritizing the budgets and the procedures and the policies necessary to make certain that we are not only in compliance, but, but actually being recognized for awards. So thank you all for the work that you do. And then Jake, if you can make certain that you share that with your team, that we really appreciate the work. I, I, I myself would appreciate that. Okay, thank you. And I'm going to go ahead, councilmembers, if you want to glance at it, it's right here. Does anybody have any questions for me? Did I miss anything? Okay. What was, what was the bet on when we, what was the wager on when we were going to get out tonight, Becky? No, we didn't. All right. Well, with that said, if there is no further business from the council, there's no further business from me or staff. Without objection, we are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.
Bye, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye, Jason.
See you later. Bye.